I'd like to call the January fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen, meeting of the Board of Education to order. First item, the invocation. Ms. Etheridge?
Good evening. When trying to be helpful, focus on little things. Mother Teresa once said, "We cannot do great things on this earth. We can only do little things with great love." Sometimes our grandiose plans to do great things at some later time interfere with our chances to do little things right now. A friend once told me, "I want my life to be out of service, about service, but I can't do anything yet. Someday, when I'm really successful, I'll do lots of things for others." Meanwhile, there are hungry people in the streets, elderly people who could not, who could use some company, mothers who need help with their children, people who can't read, neighbors whose homes need to be painted, streets with litter, people who need to be listened to, and thousands and thousands of other little things that need to be done. Mother Teresa was right. We can't change the world, but to make the world a brighter place, we don't need to. All we really have to do is focus on those little acts of kindness, things we can do right now. My favorite ways to be of service are to develop my own helping rituals and to practice random acts of kindness, almost always little things that give me enormous satisfaction and peace of mind. Often, the most appreciated acts of kindness aren't the million-dollar grants from giant corporations, but the one hour of volunteer work in a home for the elderly, or the five-dollar gift from someone who can't afford anything at all. If we focus on how little difference our acts of kindness really make in the scheme of things, surely we will end up frustrated, and we'll probably use our hopelessness as an excuse to do nothing. If, however, we take great care in doing something, anything, we will feel the joy of giving and will help to make our world just a little bit brighter. If you could bow our heads for a moment of silence.
Next, we will have the pledge of allegiance, and the students who will lead the pledge will be introduced by Knott's Island Elementary School Principal, Tommy Wilson, who is also our present county school principal of the year. Tommy?
Our pledge tonight will be led by two of our fifth-grade students, August Fairbanks and Ryan Inglehard.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our school spotlight tonight is also on Knott's Island Elementary School. And I'll turn it back over to Mr. Wilson.
Dr. Dobney, board members, Ms. Scholler. Ms. Jennifer Bernhardt's fifth-grade class has recently been studying explorers and early settlements in America. They also had the opportunity to go back in time, so to speak, and get a glimpse of settlers' early daily life. And at this time, I would like to turn it over to Ryan and August, and they would like to do our presentation for us tonight.
Good evening, and welcome to the Knott's News, where the news is not so new. I'm August Fairbanks.
And I'm Ryan Inglehard. Tonight's top story is about some time-traveling students on Knott's Island.
This is really an amazing story. Fifth-grade students in Ms. Bernhardt's class at Knott's Island Elementary traveled back in time to the sixteen hundreds.
Students landed in Jamestown, Virginia, where they experienced life in the first colony of Virginia.
Students were bewildered by the ceremonial totems that surrounded them.
To adjust to the new life, they were divided into groups and given jobs.
You guys are the hunters. So you're going to need some sort of container to carry your arrow clippers in, aren't you? And you girls are hunters, you're the gatherers. So you might need something to put your...
You and about one-third of the force is going to come here, about fifty people. We'll divide into three groups. One group will go off on the palisades for sentry duty. One group will go outside for rounders, which is patrolling. And one group will stay in here in reserve. Does that sound fair?
Mm-hmm.
Really? You think one group gets to sit here all day while you're out there walking, patrolling?
No.
That's not fair at all, is it? And they don't do that either. Every couple of hours, you rotate.
The work was hard, and the students tried to find ways to travel back to their time. They even made a dugout canoe.
All right. So is it easier than hard, guys?
Hard!
Now, would you want to try to do that, dig this canoe out? Remember, when it starts...
But realized they all wouldn't fit.
Sometimes they had arguments. They got into fights about trading. Yeah, they did. Sure, because they didn't understand each other. Guess what they did?
Not with your feet, just with your arms. You don't move.
Nobody move.
Which is why you all now are smushed.
Well, I bend this way.
Just move your hands. Hand over hand.
They traded items and worked to earn their way onto the Susan Constant, a ship they could all travel on. Mysteriously, they all made it back to their present day.
Okay, Robert, what was your favorite or most interesting part of going through Jamestown?
My most interesting and favorite part about Jamestown field trip was probably when the guy shot the musket.
It's a little hole in the side of the barrel. Called the touch hole. When you ignite the powder on the outside, it comes through the hole, ignites the main charge inside. I'll demonstrate all the moving parts on this...
Yep, cover.
Yes, fire!
How was time traveling back to Jamestown?
It was kind of weird when, because when you go back in time, it feels like you're a different person.
Interesting. What time and place did you travel to?
I traveled in Jamestown, and I went back to sixteen oh seven.
Why would you like to live back in that time?
Because there's a lot of interesting things back there that we don't get to see today.
And like the... Would you like to live back in that time, and why?
No, because they don't have a lot of electronics back then. You had to make everything, not buy it.
So you're a gamer?
Yes.
How was time travel?
Felt weird. I got tickles in my tummy.
What was your favorite or most interesting part?
I learned how the Powhatan Indians made clothing.
And how they made their food. How was the time traveling?
Really weird. It was like really fast, and it only took like ten minutes.
Anything positive about going to Jamestown?
When they fired the new musket.
How was time travel?
It was very weird and unusual. It's like the bus was closing in on us.
What time and place did you travel to?
Jamestown around the sixteen hundreds.
Would you like to live back in that time, and why?
Yes, because it's very interesting how they made their clothing and everything.
Nice meeting you, Madison.
Nice meeting you, too.
Ryan and August, thank you very much. You did a great job. And Mr. Wilson, would you thank all the other students in Knott's Island that participated in the making of this? Thank you. Next, approval of the agenda. And before I ask for approval, I'd like to delete item four point three from the consent agenda, and that's a memorandum of understanding for the wind turbine. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, student school board member report. Jonathan Jackson?
All right. We'll start off with the high school tonight. Currently, it's exam week, which means second semester is going to start next week. Project Purple students attended First Flight High School this morning to meet the founder of Hope Dreams, Hoop Dreams, excuse me, Chris Heron. He's a former professional basketball player, and he gave an inspirational speech talking about the decisions he's made in his life. Speaking of which, it's Project Purple night at the next home basketball game, this Friday, January eighteenth, at seven thirty against First Flight. Overall, the basketball team has had a season record of seven wins and eight losses. Rehearsals for the spring musical have started, and the men's tennis season starts the second weekend, the second week of February. At JP Napp Early College, recruitment for incoming freshmen has started, and the applications will be available February fourth. This is to both the Currituck and Moyoc Middle School. Spring semester has already begun, with the fall awards ceremony taking place this Friday at eight twenty a.m. In February, the prom committee will be holding a fundraiser involving ten-dollar barbecue plates from the one and only Currituck BBQ. And at Moyoc Middle School, interesting news, seventh grader Blaine Wiltgen was named as one of the ten winners of the Victor E. Bell Junior Scholarship, already seventh grade. County news, science Olympiad competition will be Saturday, January twenty-sixth, at the East Carolina University in Greenville, North Carolina. Both the high school and the early college will have teams this year. Next Monday is a holiday, and so that means no school for students and staff, and then next Tuesday is the teacher workday, so no school for students. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan, Thomas, and Rick. Next, the board's being asked to invoke policy twenty-four fifty to suspend board policies, and the policy in particular that is being recommended that we suspend is policy thirty-four twenty, student promotion and accountability. And speaking about what portions of this that we're being asked to suspend is Sandy Kinsel, the assistant superintendent.
Good evening, Dr. Dobney, members of the board, and Ms. Scholler. The new Common Core state standards, as well as, well, the Common Core state standards for English, language arts, and mathematics, as well as the essential standards for all other subject areas from K through twelve are being implemented this year across the state, as well as in Currituck County. As such, when new curriculum is developed and implemented, assessments are sure to follow. And so this year will be the first year where everyone is being taught the new curriculum, and therefore, they will be assessed on new assessments based on the new curriculum this year. The new end-of-grade reading and math assessments for three through eight, and the end of course, Algebra I, Integrated I, English II, and Biology summative assessments align to the new standards, and will be administered for the first time this fall, which is actually what you're experiencing now at the high school. When new assessments are administered for the first time, student scores are delayed while the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction processes the test data and does the necessary analysis to ensure the results are valid and reliable. And also, part of this process is standard setting, where they determine what scores will be the range for Level One, a Level Two, Level Three, and Level Four, which determines proficiency for our state. Policy thirty-four twenty, which is our promotion and accountability policy, includes language that discusses and references students needing to perform at a Level Three or achieve a Level Three or higher on their EOGs, as well as EOCs, to receive course credit. Also included in this policy is a portion that references retest opportunities for students that don't achieve a Level Three or higher. So we're asking tonight that board invoke policy twenty-four fifty, the suspension of board policies, and only suspend those portions of this policy that reference the requirement for a Level Three or the retest parts.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion on this? I might say that at four o'clock today, we had a work session where this was discussed in depth, so the board really has a much better knowledge than the snapshot that Sandy just gave us.
In addition, Dr. Dobney, parents are receiving letters about this, and we have posted that information regarding the delay of the scores and the achievement levels. It's on the high school's website, and again, it's been sent home to all of the staff, or by staff, to the students.
Great. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next, information items. Our next work session will be February eleventh at four o'clock at the Napp Professional Learning Center, and our next board meeting will also be February eleventh at seven o'clock here at the Historic Courthouse. We did not have anybody sign up for the public comment session, but I understand somebody wants to speak. John Snowden, if you could give your name and address, please.
Thank you, Dr. Dobney. Thank you, members of the board. Ms. Kraft and I had spoken about a couple items, actually, when she was running for commissioner. First, we'll be kind of humorous, and then we'll get to some serious stuff. When she was running for Board of Education, pardon me, not commissioner, I told her that I would give her my vote if she would support one piece of curriculum in the school system. And she didn't oblige herself or make an obligation until I discussed it with her. But one of my pet peeves, because I have a farm in Maple, I also work in information technology, so I have kind of both sides of the spectrum. I'm going to tell you tonight a tale of three bags, okay? And I brought props, so you should beware speakers who bring props. The first bag is our friend, the plastic bag. There's about three hundred and eighty million plastic bags used a year that consume twelve million barrels of oil. I said million with an M, not billion. Only one to two percent of these bags are recycled, which is, you take them to Food Line or wherever you buy your groceries, and put them back in the container, or you use them around the house. We use them on the farm a lot of times, because we urge people to recycle them. The oil that makes this bag takes about a million to a million and a half years to form underground. Organic material goes off the continental slope, and it gets under pressure, and it cooks down into the stuff that makes the oil. And then we drill into it, or out in the plains and basins, and we pull the oil up, and we use some of the oil, the very same oil that we use to run our cars and our machinery, is also consumed with this. So keep in mind, a million to a million and a half years, and all those other big numbers I gave you. This is not sustainable, because sustainable means that we can use a resource and generate a resource to replace it in a relatively short period of time. I don't plan on being here in a million, a million and a half years, and probably none of the rest of us do. This never fully decomposes. I can take you out in my field and show you where they blow in off the road that somebody was going to the dump, and I'll disc them under if we don't see them, because we try to pick them up, because the animals get all tangled in them. The next year, I can go out, and I'll see these pop back up, and they're in smaller pieces, but they're never fully decomposed. When they do decompose, a lot of the plastics that are in the ocean come from these bags and plastic cups, styrofoam cups, plastic bottles. They decompose into what's called polyethylene terephthalate. That's a mouthful, it's PET. That's the plastic that all this stuff is made of. It gets into smaller and smaller bits, but it's still identifiable as plastic. It washes into the ocean. If you go online and Google the Pacific Gyre, or the Pacific Garbage Patch, there's a huge patch of this northwest of Hawaii that's just sitting there in the currents of the ocean, and the fish are swimming in it and eating it, little bits of plastic. The stuff they make this out of has BPA in it, bisphenol A. Google that. It gets into us through the food chain, and it affects the way your hormones work in your body. And it's just deadly. It's deadly to the animals, and eventually, it's deadly to us. And there's another thing in it. It's called PS oligomers. It's polystyrene, not a polymer, but an oligomer, an eight-sided polymer. So ultimately, this is not good stuff, ever. When you go to the grocery store, you should avoid those. The best bag is this little green recycle bag. Now, I told you I had three bags. They have a paper bag. It's an old friend. You can throw your trash in it after you're finished, then get in the landfill. It lasts a little while, but this is made of a sustainable resource, pine trees. Takes seventeen years for pine trees to grow, to make this bag. Seventeen years versus one and a half million years, okay? Ten billion paper bags are used every year. Fourteen million trees consumed. But once again, it's a little more environmentally friendly than the plastic bag. So if you go to Food Line, they'll start throwing you groceries in a plastic bag. I make them take them out and put them in paper, if I don't have my green bags. These decompose, I can get paper in the field. I use newspaper down the middle of my rows as a mulch. Decomposes within a year to two years. You can actually buy a row cover that's made out of brown kraft paper. This is, the brown paper's not as processed as the white paper we write on, so the chemicals and all aren't a considerable threat. But this will decompose in the field in a year and a half, and I still see those guys floating around. So this is somewhat more sustainable, and the trees that are used to make this make oxygen, which you and I breathe. So there's a little bit of a benefit to growing pulpwood. People complain when they see the swamps cut down. They're cutting them for pulpwood. They're cutting them to make trees. It's a sustainable resource. Within our lifetime, forty years, those trees will be back up tall again. The Lower Swamp in Isla is an example. It was logged out fifty years ago, just as bare as it is today. Trees grew back up. It's renewable. So we have a bad product and a good product. The best one is this. Take these to the grocery store and use these. You can reuse them and reuse them and reuse them. They're like a dollar. But if you can't, if you don't have one of these, you forget it. Always ask for paper. I would like that little story I just told taught in science class, because the number of kids that I run into that work at these grocery stores that have no clue that the oil that makes the gas to go into your car also is made on this. And I tell them, every time you use one of these, price gas goes up, because you're using oil to make this instead of making gasoline. We have to teach our kids this, because some of these kids won't go off to college. Some of them just don't avail themselves to read and learn about it until we present it to them. So somewhere in the science curriculum in the high school, we need to put this in there to teach our kids to be more focused on what's going on around them. I know you've got a packed curriculum, but you tell them that story, and they'll see it when they know that this gasoline that they've put in their cars to go and drive. So that was the kind of humorous thing. The next thing that came up after I actually talked to Ms. Kraft about this was, y'all familiar with Ricky Balance? He went out in Corn joke bay, like many of us have. I've gone out there duck hunting and fishing in the wintertime, fishing nets. And unfortunately, he fell in the water, and he probably drowned, suffered hypothermia and drowned. That's just speculation on my part. Currituck has about two hundred miles of shoreline, in excess of two hundred miles of waterfront shoreline. We're known as the sport of paradise, even still, because there's a thriving duck hunting business. Ricky liked to duck hunt. There's a thriving recreational fishing business and commercial fishing business. So a lot of our people are out on the water, and when their kids leave school, some of them will not go off to college and get jobs like I did, where I'm sitting at a desk all day long. I do come back and go fishing sometimes, but I don't have to go out on the water and make my living. Some of those kids will have to go out there. And I think, we probably couldn't have prevented what happened to Ricky, because I lost two or three of my friends from high school to the sound. They went out duck hunting, an accident happened, they were in the water, they died of hypothermia. But I think we owe it to those who've passed, whether it's Gilman Brumsey, who went out from Barco forty years ago, fishing nets. He was older than I am. He was probably my dad's age. He fell overboard. They did a search for two or three weeks, and finally, the bay gave up his body. Johnny Nelson. Most of you probably know Johnny. Johnny was my age. He went duck hunting. The boat capsized. Only one person out of about four survived that. So I think in health and PE classes, and this is because so many people move in here. I mean, before, you had so many people coming in. My father told me the dangers of going out there. His father told him. We learn from each other. But you get people who come in here, and they don't understand that when that water's thirty-six degrees and you fall in, you probably got about five minutes before your arms don't work. And then you go down, and you're not coming back up unless somebody's right there. We need to teach the kids, whether it's in health and PE, or water safety section, that class, and I'm not saying devote nine weeks. It could be a couple of days. But everybody who graduates from our school system should understand the dangers of that sound. I think we owe it to the kids that come through, because when one of them dies, you all think about it. So I respectfully ask that you look at doing that somewhere in the health and PE curriculum. I think it's a good place. When I went to East Carolina, you had to show proficiency in swimming, because eastern North Carolina has so much water in it. Before you got out of PE class, you had to demonstrate that you could swim. So that's all I have for you, Mike. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, John. And we already are teaching some of the kindergarten students through the YMCA in a partnership how to swim, so even though the school system itself doesn't own any, you know, swimming pools, we are trying to provide, you know, swimming instruction for them. And how many, where's Sandy? How many schools are we in partnership with Y right now?
Five out of our six.
Five out of six.
Yes. The only school that's not currently a partner is Knott's Island because of their distance from the YMCA, but we're going to be working with them to see if we can bring those kindergartners over to.
Okay. Thank you. And as far as the hypothermia and the ecology and that, you know, I can't speak. I have no idea if we teach that or not, and we'll check into it and, you know, try to include it if we can into the curriculum. Last item, board member comments. Ms. Etheridge?
Yes, I would just like to welcome everyone back. I hope everybody had a nice holiday break and are well-rested and refreshed and ready to go for two thousand and thirteen. And also, my condolences go out to the families of Ricky Balance and his wife, and his loved ones and friends. Quite devastating for the county. And like John said, I would like to help in any way that we can by teaching every child in Currituck County at an early age to know how to swim, even though in Ricky's instance, it may not have helped, but it would be nice to have each child in the county be able to swim. Thank you.
Simmons?
I had a chance to go to the high school to see their end-of-the-semester, end-of-the-year program, Christmas program, where the chorus had a chance to sing, the band had a chance to play. Ms. Newbern had a chance to do a skit of The Grinch, which was really good. I also have had a chance to go see our basketball team again play, if you get a chance. I think Jonathan said they play, what, home Friday night? If you get a chance, come out and watch our basketball teams and other athletic events we have going on here in our county. And just appreciate seeing everybody coming back after the new year.
Ms. Kraft?
Yes, I also welcome you all back and hope you had a safe holiday. And on the same note, with Ricky Balance, hug your family and tell them you love them tonight, because we don't know how short time is with them. So just take that opportunity to do that. And I also had a chance to go to Moyoc Elementary School and watch the kindergarten program. It was excellent, as usual.
Thank you. Ms. Gatters?
I just want to thank, first, the parents and students that came over from Knott's Island tonight. I personally, obviously, know the trip that you've made to come over, and you all did a great job, and I want to say congratulations. That was great, and the video was awesome. I also got to attend the Knott's Island Christmas program. It was wonderful. All the classes did great, pre-K all the way up to fifth grade. You all did wonderfully, and I'm glad to be back, and I hope the students are looking forward to the next semester.
Thank you. At the four o'clock work session, we received our annual audit report, and I'd just like to say that we received a glowing report about how well our school district's doing financially. And lastly, on January twenty-fourth, I'd like to wish Tommy Wilson good luck in his participating in the regional principal of the year. participating in the Regional Principal of the Year competition then.
Yes.
So good luck again. Any other comments from any of the board members with that? Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.